Good evening, everybody. The hour being after 6:45, I'd like to call the December 11th School Committee Meeting to Order. I almost said School Building Committee Meeting to Order. The first order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So first up, we have recognitions. This is really the only enjoyable part of school committee meetings when there's students here. So I'll turn it over to Dr. Goff.
Yes, we have the first state championship in Walpole Girls Lacrosse history with us here tonight, so we want to recognize them. You finished with an overall record of 24-2, and defeated Reading High School, it was such an exciting game, in championship in June. So it was kind of like after school got out through all this, so we wanted to make sure that we recognize you all. And so really, a great group of young ladies who are also fantastic athletes and lacrosse players. So Coach Tassoni, I don't know if you have anything that you want to come up and say, but we just want to make sure that, you know, we congratulate you and we recognize you on a job well done.
I'll say what I have to say from right here.
Which we can hear you anywhere. You know that, right?
No, it was a great year, a great group of kids making history, most important part of a great team, some players. There's lots of people here that something couldn't make it, but it was wonderful, never to be forgotten, for sure.
Girls, anybody want to speak? Girls, anybody want to speak?
Wait, Kim, I think you want to say something.
Anybody up here want to say anything? Nancy?
Yeah, I just, I think sports are a fantastic way for kids to find their niche in high school. I'm assuming that that's part of what has happened for you guys. I think women's sports are just coming into their own in such a good way these days. So I think it's just, you make us proud. And Coach Tassoni, you've been with it for a while, and you deserve it tremendously, too. So we just, you know, the way the timing worked, we couldn't really celebrate you like in the beginning of July because we weren't meeting and everybody was away. But you made us proud, so we just wanted you to know that.
Anybody else? Carrie?
Congratulations, all of you. I'm seeing some college sweatshirts. I'm curious if any of you are currently playing in college or have plans to do so? I'm sorry, you have to talk now because I asked a question.
Oh, yeah, I play at UMass over.
Awesome. Anybody else?
I play at Babson College.
Great. Anybody else?
I'm going to play at Chapel next year.
Fantastic.
I'm going to play at UNH.
Excellent. Wow. Well, that's quite a check, Agri.
I'm going to play at Maribor.
Amazing.
I'm going to play at Bryan.
Some field hockey players, well, some lacrosse players.
Is anybody going to play at Walpole?
Oh, yes, yes, they do.
Well, job very well done, and it feels probably pretty good to make history in this way, so congratulations.
So usually, we have teams come up and take a picture. So if you guys want to come up, stand in front and...
It's your TV moment.
Me, too.
Get right in front of us. Right in front of us.
Or you can take off. That was just a joke, by the way. Our next order of business...
I have one in fourth grade, she was probably like, "No."
Our next order of business will be the math update. I don't know who's going in what order.
We are going to start with elementary school, right? With Sheila Rinaldi and Jen Turigian.
All right, well, good evening, and thank you for having us. I'm Sheila Rinaldi, the math coach for Boydin and Old Post Road, and my colleague Jen Turigian for Elm and Fisher. And so we're opening our presentation tonight with some data, and then introducing how we use our resources to address what the data is showing us, both positively and in the areas that we're looking to grow. We're in our fourth year of the Bridges curriculum, so our veteran teachers are very confident with the programs, and they're seeing students enter their new classroom each year with stronger skill sets because of the vertical alignment that the program provides for us. You're going to see through the data that our younger students are building strong foundational skills, and most students are able to carry that foundation through to the upper grades. However, the data is also going to show us that as the cognitive demand increases, we are seeing some groups of students in that yellow, that partially meaning area, and our goal is to use our resources to help move those students closer to bigger green. So this graph is our K students, and you can see that it shows the domains. Each graph for each grade will show the domains that those students are being assessed in throughout the year. And from our K students, you can see that 85% of our K students are meeting expectation in all domains but measurement and data. There's some really tough questions on them, for them, in those measurement and data questions as kindergartners, but you can flip now. And our grade one student is consistent with that, and over 85% of our students are meeting grade level expectations across all of the four domains that are taught in grade one. In grade two, we have a slight dip down to 80% of our students meeting expectations in all domains, with the exceptions of operation and algebraic thinking, where we're at 75%. And that domain requires a lot of reasoning, flexible thinking, ability to see patterns at a new level in grade two, which can partially explain that dip. They're just beginning, you know, that new set of developmental skills that they'll... they're in the developmental stage, and then we'll start to see them, start to master them more in grade three. As we move on to grade three, you can see that operations and algebraic thinking moves to one of our strongest domains because they've gotten stronger in developing those skills. Fractions and geometry are the new concepts, and they're deepening those understandings, so we see a rise in students in the yellow and the partially meaning categories. But we're still showing consistent numbers over the years, so this is the last three years since we've been using Bridges. And we are decreasing the areas in that red and orange. What's really nice as well, we are decreasing those, and those are students with the strongest needs, so we're getting them at least up into that yellow category. For grade four, we have that positive increase in fractions and geometry, while operations and algebraic thinking and base 10 kick up again. Again, it's like a cyclical pattern. You know, one year they're being introduced, and then the next year they can solidify those skills, and then they hit the next grade, and there's like, okay, now we're not just, you know, learning about fractions, now we're finding equivalent fractions, now we're adding fractions with, you know, different denominators. So the cycle continues. In grade five, again, we continue the pattern with strong percentages in operations and algebraic thinking and geometry, as they are focus areas of the grade five curriculum, and fractions in base 10 have those higher percentages of students in the partially meaning areas due to new concepts introduced in the standards in grade five. So we have a lot to celebrate in the data that we see, but we also have areas that we're looking to address in order to move more students from that partially meaning category into the meaning category. The rest of our presentation is going to focus on the resources we're utilizing to support all of our students on their path to achievement. Coaching, resources, partnerships, and opportunities are the foundations that help us achieve our goals. So as coaches, Jen and I are focusing not only on sharing the resources we are lucky enough to have here in Walpole, but also the best practices for how to maximize the use of these resources for positive outcomes. Our new tool that has been added to our teachers' toolboxes this year is Generation Genius. This was a tool that was available to us during COVID for free, so teachers were able to use it, and then unfortunately, it had a cost. We continued to use the science version, and then after OPR did a pilot last year, we found it was a great program to supplement our Bridges curriculum. The videos available through this platform cover 94% of the mass curriculum frameworks, and so they are an excellent supplement for us. Teachers have been provided, the picture on the right is a correlation chart for Bridges and Bridges Scope and Sequence and all the videos in Generation Genius. So Jen and I worked so that the teachers would have an easy way to implement these videos and know exactly when they would fit in their, in our core curriculum. These highly engaging videos show math and context of real-world situations and come with a variety of resources teachers can utilize to extend, reinforce, and accelerate learning. So this is just kind of what it looks like, and you can see they come with vocabulary, reading material, practice problems, online quizzes, and so the staff can use these. They're great to introduce or review at the end of the unit. They're great if a teacher has to be out for a meeting, or because we know that the students are still getting quality instruction. It can be adaptive, and that students can be given the individual link to watch a video during a math workshop if there's someone who needs a second dose on something. So it's a really versatile program that the teachers are really enjoying. And the kids, you go in and they're like, "It's Generation Genius," they get all excited. Okay, you can click to the next one. ST Math continues to be one of our most popular supplements to our core curriculum. If you, you know, know our kids, they're always talking about Gigi and where they are in their percentages. Our school, all of our four elementary schools reached over 100% progress last year, and we reduced the number of students who did not reach at least 40% to 9% throughout the district, which was a really strong number. The effect size between the pre and post quizzes that the students in grades two to five take are also showing that ST Math is still an effective tool for our students. The bar graph over in the corner of the presentation is a slide from ST Math for across the state of Massachusetts, but it shows that no matter what demographic our students fall in, that students who use ST Math are performing stronger across the state scores than students who do not. So, and that's their most current data. What's different this year about ST Math is we're asking students to, you can flip to the next one, yeah, is that we're asking students to explain what's the math within their puzzles. We found that, and ST Math found when they went out and talked to students about what they were doing, they could tell them what Gigi was doing on the screen, but it was, they had a hard time using that math vocabulary. So we've kind of switched our focus. Our students know how to do it, they do really well, they get really excited, but we really want them to dig deep into figuring out what is it, how can they connect it to what they're doing in their Bridges curriculum? So that has been our focus, to bring ST Math to a new level. A few things that have been happening, our students are matching their puzzles to Bridges Word problems and even to MCAS questions. They're matching the models that we use in Bridges to the models that they're seeing in ST Math, so we're giving that direct instruction for them to be like, "Oh, lightbulb, wait, we just did this in Number Corner, and now I'm seeing that same model in ST Math." We are also, we have stand-up Gigi's, and the kids were doing a quick reflection after they did a math lesson, and they wrote Gigi a little note about how what they did connected to what they did in their ST Math puzzles. And they, I mean, if you could get a close-up of some of them, they're, "Dear Gigi, we learned about, you know, tens, hundreds, and thousands today, just like in your puzzles." So it's really cute. And then one of the, another project that we've worked on with many of the classes in partnership with our DLCs is a book creator project. You can turn the page, and these are some samples of the students' pages, where the students took a puzzle and put it into the book creator page, and they, you see the little videos, because they're actually videos of them sharing how they solve the puzzle using math vocabulary, what Gigi has to do to get across the screen. And then, in the green box, they're making connections to how, what the math that they did is related to something that they would do in the real world, or what they've done in their core curriculum. So there wasn't really an efficient way to get it to be able to play what they had to say, but they, you can see, a couple of them wrote it as well. So they're just a way that we're really digging in. Let's see. So giving these students the opportunity to practice constructing these responses and sharing their thinking is preparing for them for when they're asked to do this in other situations. And when we looked at our MCAS, one of the places where we want to see growth is in that part where they're constructing responses and having to come up with a short-answer response. So we're trying to give them these opportunities in all different ways, not just, you know, in an assessment, but in practice, in the classroom, and with activities that are highly engaging, like this. I am going to pass over to Jen now to continue.
So back in 23-24, several of our classrooms piloted an adaptive online program called Math Fact Lab to support math fact fluency. Now in our second full year of this district-wide program in grades one through five, adaptive placement tests from this September show that more of our students in grades two through five are beginning the year with stronger fact knowledge than in previous years. Teachers appreciate that Math Fact Labs visual models and strategies align directly with our Bridges curriculum. They also value how easily they can differentiate. They can adjust session duration, fluency targets, operations, and passing thresholds to meet individual student needs. A new feature this year is family reports. Teachers can quickly generate individualized PDFs showing exactly which facts a student has mastered, which they are currently practicing, and which are still ahead. These reports make student progress clear and accessible for families. So why are we seeing such positive growth? Well, most fact fluency programs rely on rote memorization. Math Fact Lab, however, is built on an explicit, strategy-based approach grounded in strong, well-established research. This is critical for equity. When instruction focuses on strategy and sense-making, not speed, more students can experience success. For example, in the top-left image, students use double facts, such as seven plus seven, to build near-doubles like eight plus seven. In the top-right, number lines help students use ten as a benchmark for addition and subtraction beyond ten. And in the bottom example, double-bar diagrams deepen understanding of part-part-whole relationships. These visual models reduce cognitive and linguistic load and support students who benefit from multiple entry points into the math. In the next set of examples, students learning to multiply by five can use their understanding of clocks or combine fives to make tens. In the bottom two images, students see how doubling their twos facts leads naturally to their fours facts. These are the kinds of reasoning-based strategies that help close opportunity gaps by shifting fluency from who can memorize the fastest to who understands relationships between numbers. Another strength of Math Fact Lab is that students can continue stretching beyond basic facts to build reasoning, pattern recognition, and mental math fluency. After mastering addition and subtraction facts, students practice adding and subtracting single-digit and double-digit numbers mentally, and later transition to efficient strategies for two-digit computation. In the advanced multiplication sequence, students move beyond the traditional times-twelves to strategies for multiplying by multiples of five, like fifteens, twenties, twenty-fives, and fifties. In the final stage, they learn times thirteen through times twenty. A student who completes the advanced program can solve any multiplication problem up to twenty times twenty accurately, efficiently, and flexibly. This progression is especially effective for students who need scaffolded steps toward higher-level math, and it accelerates learning for students ready to move ahead. In past years, we've shared our elementary math resources website that we've created for families. Back in 2021, when I transitioned into the instructional coaching role, I also created a comprehensive website exclusively for our educators, organizing a wide range of supplemental math resources for classroom use. Resources are organized by grade, domain, and standard, with shared folders for lessons, centers, and interactive presentations. Over time, the site has grown to include sub-pages on best practices in math instruction, tech-enhanced activities for Bridges and Seesaw, professional development, enrichment, fact fluency, forefront, growth mindset, math workshop, multilingual learners, number sense routines, and ST Math. This structure ensures that teachers have quick access to research-based supports, allows us to scale best practices consistently, and gives all students access to high-quality instruction. One sub-page focuses on children's literature and math. Intentionally pairing a story with mathematical ideas allows students to make meaning in engaging, authentic ways. Stories spark curiosity, provide context, and help students see math as a tool for understanding the world, not just a set of procedures. The math literature page includes professional learning and ready-to-use classroom resources, such as curated book lists, read aloud videos, articles, podcasts, and lesson ideas. Teachers can search for books aligned to specific math standards and find activities that pair beautifully with the math they're currently teaching. Stories can launch a new unit, introduce a concept, or deepen understanding within a unit. So why do we recommend using children's literature and math? Simply because students love stories. They're enjoyable, surprising, and memorable, and they naturally draw students into the mathematics that follows. Stories place abstract ideas in familiar contexts and reflect the diverse cultures and identities of our learners, helping all students see themselves in math. This is especially important because representation and relevance significantly impact student engagement and achievement. Stories help students anchor concepts to meaningful events, shifting the thinking from, "How do I do this?" to, "What math will help me solve this?" They encourage collaboration as students discuss, debate, and build on one another's reasoning. And for students who may feel anxious about math, stories offer a safe and welcoming entry point. Math by the Book is another supplemental resource used in our elementary schools. Each grade-level guide includes lessons and activities connected to 20 different picture books that provide engaging entry points into grade-level math standards. Each book includes a menu of activities, discussion questions, problem-solving tasks, explorations, games, and projects. So last spring, Mr. Sullivan's fourth graders read a book called Harlem Groan, The True Story of Tony Hillary and the Students Who Transformed a Vacant City Lot in New York Into a Thriving Urban Farm. Before reading, the class watched a very short video tour of the garden, which also shared statistics about that community. 90% of families there live below the poverty line, 98% rely on food stamps, and 40% of the children live in shelters. This context set the stage for rich, real-world mathematical conversations, and it broadened students' awareness of how math connects to issues of equity and community. After reading, students were challenged to use their understanding of area and perimeter to solve the math embedded in the story. They calculated the perimeter of each garden bed to determine how much wood would be needed for framing, then designed layouts including beds, pathways, and seating that met specific criteria. As an extension, students imagined what they would design on a vacant lot if it were available near their school. The photo on the left shows some of the zoo designs created by our fourth graders. Just before Thanksgiving this year, with many families preparing for car travel, Mr. Sullivan read, "Are we there yet?" Question we, as parents, have heard a million times. A story about a boy who imagines traveling through time while on a long drive to his grandmother's house. This story aligned perfectly with grade four's November Number Corner focus on elapsed time. Students eagerly pointed out patterns in the illustrations and shared their observations. They then used open number lines to model elapsed time problems with unknown start-or-end times, comparing and discussing different ways to represent the same duration. The lesson concluded with a partner game where students selected two digital time cards and calculated the elapsed time. The shortest duration won the round. These examples show how stories prime students for mathematical thinking and connection-making. When we want students to explore ideas, ask questions, explain reasoning, and collaborate, stories provide a powerful pathway, one that benefits all learners, particularly those who need context to access abstract ideas. The last resource we're highlighting from our staff site is our collection of Bridges Unit Previews. Each grade-level page links to a growing collaborative shared folder of unit-specific materials. As former classroom teachers, Sheila and I know how challenging it is to plan daily instruction across five major content areas. To support teachers, I develop these Bridges Unit Preview documents for every unit at every grade level. These roadmaps help teachers plan student-centered lessons and navigate their materials more efficiently. Each preview includes a clear overview of the unit, prep and instructional tips, video demonstrations of new workplaces, and direct links to Math Learning Center digital tools and blog posts, and a detailed list of the skills and standards marked as introduced, developing, or to be mastered. Recently, I added clickable links to ST Math Puzzle Talks, Generation Genius videos, and Math by the Book resources aligned to each unit, helping teachers seamlessly incorporate all of these supplemental supports into their planning. These previews are another key equity tool. They help ensure that across all schools and all classrooms, students are receiving aligned, high-quality instruction, minimizing variability and strengthening outcomes for every learner. We hope tonight gave you a little window into math in our elementary schools now, and welcome your questions and feedback.
Anybody? Any questions?
If I could just add one thing, Mark. I got an email, was it a week and a half ago, two weeks ago, from Jen, celebrating, we have another recognition night, celebrating Sheila who was recognized at an ST Math Day for the, it was a Golden Skateboard Award, right? And that is, I'll read just the, if you'll excuse me one second, I'll read just the beginning, and this was all sent to me, which shows you about their teamwork here, by Jen, who was very proud. But our rep said, "I'm excited to present the Golden Skateboard Award today, the disc champion, Sheila. I have the honor of celebrating. She's an absolute powerhouse. She isn't just the math coach for one school, she splits her time between two schools and still gives 100% of herself, no matter where she is. Over the last three years, she's had the privilege of working with her, she's attended multiple champion events, sharing her expertise and enthusiasm with this community. Every single time I speak with her, she has something new, creative, and amazing to share, and of course, I immediately convinced her to share it with all of you." It goes on to say more, but I think that is worth celebrating. And I did add, Jen, if you can go to the last slide of their presentation, I did, or Patrick?
Thank you, guys.
I did add the actual picture, if you go to the next slide, or you might have to exit out of it and go back in, sorry.
That's okay.
Hold on, there it is, see? There she is, being recognized officially with Gigi. So I just want to take a minute, and I think Sheila would probably say Jen would be equally, you know, deserving of that honor, but it's awesome that Jen was the first to reach out and share that, and we got that out to her staff and recognized it in some meetings as well.
Thank you. And I certainly could not do it or achieve it without Jen as my partner, and actually without all of the teachers that support us and take our crazy ideas and implement them in the classroom and get the students excited about the promotions that were, you know, kind of getting everybody excited about math. So if they didn't join in, then we wouldn't be recognized, so it's definitely a community award. So thank you.
Anybody else?
I just want to say, I think it's, the supplemental things sound amazing, especially for people who just...
Anybody else?
I just want to say I think it's, the supplemental things sound amazing, especially for people who just don't understand the basic core curriculum, that you're providing all these different ways for kids to access and understand all the math concepts. So I, as somebody who is not a math genius, I think it's amazing that there are all these other opportunities for kids to learn. Nice job.
Thank you.
Nancy?
Yeah, I was just going to say, this is just so exciting to see, like, how having the two of you in support of the teachers has made such a difference. You know, I think that, like you said, typically, an elementary teacher has five preps, and they don't have time to do what you've been able to do. And it looks like a huge amount of support for them, but it's so beautifully done. It's exciting. It makes it fun. And just thank you. It's great to see.
Carrie?
It's great that every year you're able to come to us with showing improvement. It's really wonderful to see. And I was struck by the language in the word problem from the Harlem Groan. This, to me, is probably the most engaging word problem I've ever seen. Like, just in terms of the way that it's written, the relevance of it, and sort of how it draws you in, and there is a story element to it that I, it makes me wonder if teachers and/or in other of our common assessments, if it maybe provides a model for us to think about in how we're wording, like, different prompts for kids, right? Like, rather than, you know, moving beyond, like, Kristen has twenty-something, and Carrie takes seven, you know, like, something a little more engaging. So anyway, that was just something that was really noteworthy to me, and it's really, really interesting to see the variation in how the kids responded to the diagram question. I love that we're showing kids that there's more than one right answer, even in math, where people think there's only one right answer. So that's excellent.
Anybody else? All right, who's next?
Always a tough act to follow Gigi in storytime and all of those things, but I do my best.
Somebody needs to show up as Gigi, one of these things.
The elementary principals were at the middle school the other day, and the kids were like, "Can I dress up as Gigi again?" Like, I'm like, "Gigi just keeps coming back." I love it. Thank you again for having the opportunity to share with you some of the exciting things happening in the middle school world. Tonight, my main focus is going to be on three key areas. We are in the early stages of a curriculum review for middle school math. We are in year two of iXL implementation, so I'm going to really focus in on how we're utilizing that resource and give you a snapshot of what interventions and student supports are looking like at the middle school. So the big piece right now is our curriculum review process for math at the middle school. We have a fantastic team, ready to do the work needed to make important decisions about our math curriculum, including teachers from all three grade levels and special ed representation, which is fantastic. We had our first meeting in early November, when we reviewed the overall process, including the timeline that you see here, to get a sense of what needs to be done, where we're going, kind of getting that big-picture look. Following this meeting, surveys were sent to family and caregivers, as well as to our staff, our math teachers, and the special ed teachers in our school. And we actually have our next meeting tomorrow morning, where we will meet to review the feedback that came from those surveys and start to make our next step decisions. One of the big pieces for us after reviewing the survey feedback, the team will use those results, along with information available about various curriculums, to begin to make some decisions. Curate and ed reports are used to evaluate the quality of design of curriculum materials to provide reviews for which, that help districts to identify high-quality instructional materials. Curate really focuses Massachusetts specifically, where ed reports is used more nationally. Both resources focus on grade-level standards alignment, instructional quality, and accessibility and usability for teachers and students. Ultimately, they do a little bit of the heavy lift for us upfront, help us to narrow down our focus area. It will help to give us an initial idea of the quality of the curriculums that we are considering. And of course, we want to look for the ones that are, in fact, highly rated. However, the team will also spend some time reviewing physical and online materials of options that we initially select. And we will develop a rubric that will also consider the feedback gathered from our surveys. We joked about this, I actually think it was Dr. Han that shared this joke, that if eighty percent of our staff give us the feedback that they want colorful, bright pictures to accompany every word problem, or maybe storybooks, I'm not sure, to accompany every word problem within a curriculum series, we'd be hard-pressed not to consider that. You know, if the feedback shows it enough, we want to make sure that we're hearing the voices of all of our stakeholders. I really do look forward to providing you with more updates on this. As you can see, we're in the very early stages. Tomorrow, we will hopefully have an opportunity to dive in a little bit to some of the materials we've started to gather already. But I'm excited for the opportunities that this is going to provide us. We had a really great turnout for our survey feedback, and I think we're going to get a lot of good information from that. Diving into iXL, we are really excited to be in year two, to be much more comfortable with this resource, to really have a good understanding of what we can do with it and how it can really benefit us. This first graph shows you the full school's results from our fall diagnostic, which was given in early September. This helps teachers get an early idea of student levels in math, helping to identify both strengths and challenges right from the start. It also serves as our benchmark, which then allows us to monitor the growth of all throughout the school year. One great piece with iXL is that we are constantly updating our data. In-school students enter the arena, it actually does say "enter the arena" at the top of their screen. That is their diagnostic, but they do this one time per cycle in math class for 10 minutes. Oftentimes, for students, that's enough for their score to be updated. It's what they call "pinpointing." Right now, this was, I snapshotted this at the end of last week. You can see that there are 171 students not pinpointed. What this means is that they've been in the arena. They didn't get enough time to get a new score, but they're still actively being updated. They can still access all of their skills. They can still do their weekly homework. Teachers can still access their data. It just tells us that they're in that cycle of being updated for us. With this opportunity, getting them in there so frequently, we are able to more closely monitor the progress that students are making. Each dot on this graph represents a diagnostic pinpoint. The first point is the initial diagnostic. After that, any points that you see on the graph are from the student entering the arena in math class. This particular student is showing steady progress so far and is essentially right on target as a sixth-grade student at the mid-sixth-grade level at this point in the school year. Teachers have access to this for all of their students, and they can react if they don't see enough pinpoints, if they don't see the progress line trending in the right direction, rather than waiting for that mid-year diagnostic, which we still will have, which will give us that whole-school growth picture as well. But the feedback, the data, is constantly being updated for teachers to be able to see how students are doing. Overall, all three grade levels are making steady progress to this point in the year. We're seeing positive trends across all three grade levels. And it's always amazing to me, every time I click on, how many questions and how many skills have been attacked. Where, when you combine math and ELA, which I see when I log onto my account, it's hundreds of thousands of questions that students are answering, and it's just amazing. What students see when they log in is this image that you see here. We call this their star chart, for good reason. This is where students go to complete their weekly homework assignments. Often, they're encouraged to work from perhaps the skill that's the lowest, but sometimes, teachers encourage students to work out of a specific skill area if it connects to current content, if they really want that student to focus on a particular area for practice. For example, perhaps fractions tends to be a common theme. There are two strands for our students which may max out. You actually see for this student, both have maxed out. Fractions maxes out at 800, and measurement maxes out at 700. So we do, those are two areas that we do see students cap out at times. All of the others go well into the high-school grade levels. When students see a message, like what is seen here for data and statistics, which says "keep diagnosing to reveal recommendations", this student isn't currently fully pinpointed, essentially. They have an overall math level, but the system needs a little bit more information to highlight which skill areas in that topic would be most essential for that student to practice. But they have recommended skills in geometry, algebra, and numbers and operations that they can pick from. And again, they are just in it so often, which is great. Their time in iXL really adds up. We see often, for most students, a pretty good balance of the skills. Obviously, if they max out, we may see less in the fractions or the measurement areas. But like you see here, those colors in that circle, there's some representation for each of them. This is often one of the first pieces of data that we look at for students. So to know that they're getting in there and spending the time that they are updating their information tells us that we're getting a much clearer picture of where they are in that moment. It is really identified to, really designed, excuse me, to identify where students are at themselves. It is a personal identification of the skills that students are working on and really meets them where they are at and allows us to reinforce prior skills or to challenge our high flyers with higher-level thinking. There's video support built in. So sometimes, when they come to you with a, you know, real high-level high-school question, you're like, "Why don't you click that video right there and take a look?" But it's really great, because it does give them that support to access those skills. On the topic of intervention, student concerns, how we respond to the needs of our students. Math Lab is being utilized as a Tier Two intervention for our grade seven and eight students. We have flex time built into our day. It's a half-hour block that attaches to the second class of each day, allowing teachers to give in-the-moment time to students when they need it, whether it's makeup work because they were absent, catching them because they didn't quite get that skill in class today, being able to provide those interventions then and there. Our PLCs continue to work on pacing, spiral review opportunities. What you see in these images is more iXL. A lot of our teachers are utilizing iXL for their formative assessments because it gives such quick data for them and feedback. This particular example came from a seventh-grade teacher. She was able to get a quick snapshot of the student understanding, but also got a chance to see the common mistakes that are recurring, as it's showing how many students answered a particular response, which allows her to then reinforce the skill with a specific focus, rather than, "Let's just try it again." It's like, "Nope, I see where you went wrong there. You needed a subtraction sign and not the addition sign," whatever it might be. And then our intervention model continues to grow. We continue to do tons and tons of work with our MTSS process. We are actively meeting as concerns arise for students, reviewing the data, determining intervention needs. And our interventionist is doing a phenomenal job right now, not only with the small-group supports in Math Lab, but also the push-in model, really creating amazing collaborative environments with teachers, where the moment she walks through the door, the teachers, like, the kids know, it's like, "Small-group opportunities. I'm going to get the attention that I need. I'm going to get the time that I need to practice this skill." And it's really just come a long way in just a short time. We've only been one building for a year, and seeing that opportunity grow has been great. The other thing, as one of my teachers highlighted, having everybody in the same building just works wonders for so many reasons. Our teachers are really working hard to ensure that students have the opportunity to be successful. I highlight this slide because this is one question from one of our common assessments at grade six. It's the same question, but four different versions of that question. The original is in the top right. That's an untouched question, the original version, that the majority of our students saw. In the top left, this was support provided following collaboration with our EL teacher for a Level One student, trying to figure out how to help this student to be as successful as possible in math. And ultimately, for this student, it meant highlighting and focusing in on a couple of vocabulary terms. The math component was fine. Once he understood what the words were asking him to do and what he needed to focus on, he was able to showcase his math understanding. In the bottom left, this was an accommodated version of the question that focused on organization for the student. It showed them where to put their work, the fact that they needed to use an area formula twice, and then finding the area of the shaded region, capitalizing "shaded" just to draw a little bit of attention to what the question is asking. And then finally, in the bottom right, this is a modified version of the question, but you'll notice that the overall expectation of the question is still there. The piece that was taken out was that second shape. They kept consistency with the shape, with the formula that was being utilized, but ultimately, we're maintaining high expectations for our students. We're still asking this student to find the area of the shaded region, which we asked all other students to do. We just took away that stress of having to use two formulas in the same problem, let them focus on identifying the shaded area and not worrying about, "Did I use the right formula here?" So ultimately, we're really excited about the start of the curriculum review process, trying to figure out what we can bring to the middle school, what is going to be the best fit for us. iXL continues to help us drive our intervention process, really helps us to meet students where they're at and really get a clear picture of what they need. And the teacher collaboration is through the roof. I had PLC meetings all day today, was with my teachers from start to finish, and the work that they are doing is just great. And the opportunities they have, just being in one building, just continue to show on a regular basis. Very much.
Questions or comments from the middle school? Carrie?
Excellent presentation, as per usual. Great to see what's happening at the middle school. I have a couple of questions. I want to understand more the logistics around the modifications of the questions. So is this like, are you creating question banks where teachers can see, like, "Here's kind of the standard question. Here's the question that's modified for English learners. Here's maybe a different..." Like, how is it being put to use?
I love that question. So our teachers have really worked to develop the baseline assessment, and then from there, individual teachers work with whatever staff they may need to work with for their particular population, whether it be that they have the English-language learners, and they work with the EL teacher, if they have a special ed teacher on their team, who, the special ed teacher really does a lot of the heavy lift in terms of looking at what the original question was, deciding, "Okay, this is what student A needs. This is what student B needs. Oh, student C needs the same as student A." And sometimes, I have special ed teachers that share as many as four versions of an assessment just to get students what they need. But they work, they then take this back to their teachers and say, "Are we still hitting the math the way that we need to?" So like, on that one that we looked at in the bottom right, the ultimate goal of that question is still there, recognizing that we're taking part of an area as opposed to the whole thing. We're still doing that piece of it. So we didn't lose the ultimate focus of that question.
And do classroom math teachers have the discretion, if they have a student, let's say, maybe they are not in our English learner program or they're not on an IEP, but the teacher recognizes that they might benefit from some sort of modification? Are they at liberty to do, make those modifications?
It's more about, like, the accommodations scaffolding that might come into play for those students. Modifications typically ties into an ed plan of some kind.
Yes, you're right. I used the wrong terminology.
That's okay. No, that's okay. Accommodation, absolutely, absolutely. Ultimately, accommodations can happen for anyone. And a lot of the times, accommodations are happening along the way. And for some students, you're pulling them away as they're becoming more confident. For others, they're holding on to them through the assessment.
Great. Thank you. And then I have just one other question about Math Lab. Do you know roughly how many students are able to take advantage of Math Lab?
So ultimately, our goal is that we are moving kids in and out of it as much as possible, with it being back this year, first time in the middle school having it. We'd had it when we were Johnson and Byrd, and we brought it back this year. It's still a little bit of a work in progress in terms of how that looks. But I would say that between seventh and eighth grade right now, we are providing small-group math intervention for probably 20 to 25 students.
Is it too early to say whether or not we have adequate resources to meet the student need for Math Lab?
Yes.
Okay, fair enough.
Ultimately, right now, if I were to give you an honest answer, I would clone our interventionist about 12 times over. I mean, I'd at least take a double, you know, for sure. You know, there's always ways that we could put that type of person to use and provide more support for students, for sure. But in terms of the Math Lab specific piece, I think it's still a little early.
Okay. Thank you, Joe.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Jill.
You're welcome.
Anybody else?
Great job.
Thank you.
While it's loading. Just wanted to say thank you for having me here this evening. There we go. I'm excited to share the progress of the high school math department and what we've accomplished over the past year and where we are still looking to grow a bit. So we'll talk about the SATs and PSATs a little bit, some of the results from MCAS, some of the professional development that we've done, which has been phenomenal, the intervention and supports that we're providing to some students, our advanced placement results, and then kind of sum up our progress and targets. I always like to kind of start with our department core belief is that every student can achieve and experience success, if, and then engage in curriculum will encourage participation, collaboration, and it will require students to develop critical thinking skills to justify their responses. And a lot of that is kind of rooted in some of the math practices. So our progress from this past year, we maintained strong results on the MCAS. Professional development was focused on differentiated instruction. We actually have our final meeting tomorrow with the group, so I got a full day with that in the curriculum review process. And we are identified and working with some struggling freshman students and providing them some significant supports, and kind of wrap up again, like I said, with some really incredible results from AP, both in enrollment and scores. The SATs and PSATs, we are performing significantly above the state and national averages on the PSAT. I know for the grade 10, the state average is kind of close to Walpole's, but something that's very important to note is, we administer the PSATs to all our juniors and sophomores. And I kind of made a rough estimate, looking at the enrollment in grade 10 MCAS last year, and then grade 11 PSAT enrollment this past year statewide. And it appears the state is at about 55% of their juniors taking the PSATs, and about 33% of their sophomores by estimate. So our results are really representative of what Walpole is, and I think we're doing well. Most skills did line up with the overall percentages as far as how we were performing and followed state trends. Geometry and trigonometry had the largest spread, and I think that had to do with some of the content that some of our students, especially in trigonometry area, just had not yet seen in their Algebra II classes, or in grade 10, they hadn't seen any of it because it doesn't arrive until some of the Algebra II or late in geometry. Our SAT data, again, continues to be a little bit difficult to compare. We have low numbers taking it on certain occasions. It's really difficult to tell who's taking it, when they're taking it. And so with 12 folks, 12 students taking it, or 35 students, we're above the state average, we're doing well. Unfortunately, in both of these, we do not get to, since the, since they went digital, we can no longer do item analysis, we just get strand analysis. But we do have massive amounts of students meeting or exceeding the benchmark, 87%, 5% approaching, and a very small percent not yet approaching. And benchmark means at grade level, or obviously exceeding would be above grade level. MCAS, we are continuing to outperform the state and hold that difference. It's leveled, the gap leveled off a little bit this year, but as I did some research, some of the, one key finding that I found was that the, since 2019, the percent of students in grade 10 meeting or exceeding has decreased 14% statewide, which was just an astonishing number to me. Meanwhile, Walpole has increased 1%. So we are, with COVID providing all the difficulties that it did, we've still maintained our students' mastery in math and confident that we will continue to do so. Our growth percentile exceeded the state. I will say this year that in a couple of at-risk subgroups, we were at or a percent or two below the state averages, so that is definitely something that we are taking a look at and figuring out how we can provide better supports to the students, and I'll talk a little bit more about that shortly. A majority of our students met or exceeded expectations, 21% higher than the state average, and we did have a small number not meet expectations, but it was also significantly lower than the state average. One particular area that our algebra teachers targeted last year was a correlation idea and how they were instructing it. They made some adjustments, and we jumped to 23% above the state average on that question. So we are doing the data analysis on MCAS, question by question, because we do have the ability to do that, and it is having an impact on how we do some of our lessons and instructional approaches. Professional development, really a big theme for us this past year. Last year, the, the high school dug in big time on differentiated instruction, brought in an organization, and the feedback from the math department was that there just wasn't enough math-specific content in there. So did some research, reached out to my cohort, and landed on an organization called All Learners Network. They, they work solely on math. They do not do other subjects, and they focus on math instruction that reaches all students, differentiated instruction. Founded a school north, Plymouth North, they were rolling it out last year. So we did a site visit, a group of teachers, and talked, observed classes, talked with the teachers down there, came away pretty impressed. Some of the themes that we were interested in were themes that we were seeing, some of the building-thinking classrooms approaches, and so we decided to, to bring All Learners Network in. We met with them in March, we met with them in May, and we were meeting them again tomorrow for our final workshop. We focused on pieces of a lesson, the launch, the body, and the close. The consultant did a model lesson that we were able to videotape. We had a very diverse group of students that volunteered to, to be our, our lab rats, and it was really phenomenal to see what could be done, and with, again, a diverse group of learners. And we were, we got the permission and videotaped it, so we do have that as a resource for all our math teachers to kind of go back and refer to, because not all of them were able to be in the classroom at that time. Would have been a little overwhelming, I think, for the students. So we've also gotten some coaching and some observations done. Tomorrow, the finished product will be a really well-designed differentiated lesson that each core class is going to meet with her for part of the time, and then we're going to do another workshop and have some more work time, so I'm very excited about that. And the response from teachers has really been positive, which is awesome to hear when we invest in the, in the PD, and I think we made a great decision bringing this group in. Some of the things that I have seen as I've gone around and walked through the classrooms, thoughtful lessons that are really implementing differentiated instruction strategies, a lot of promotion of critical thinking skills, we're asking students questions as opposed to just providing them with procedures. And some of the really visible examples, and I probably should have included some pictures, I'll have the elementary group. Students are working in groups that, we call them vertical non-permanent surfaces that are hung around the room, and they're, it's easier to just say white words, but they're hung around the classroom, and in small groups of two or three, they're kind of working together to solve problems. A lot of times, that happens early on in the class. They're exploring before they regather as a, as a group and kind of discuss how to tackle the problems. So the discourse is, has increased significantly. And another opportunity is that students are being, provide different problems based on their comfort and mastery. A couple of the teachers call them mild, medium, and spicy, and so students can kind of access the content at different levels, depending on how comfortable they are at that point in time. Some of the supports and interventions, as we always have, we're, we're using data to encourage, and unfortunately, sometimes we have to kind of mandate students to access these supports. We have the intervention during study hall. Almost every period, we have a math teacher down in the library to, to support students that want to go down there and get some help. Wednesday afternoons, and I'd actually say almost all afternoons are very well-attended after school in the, in the math hallway, and the teachers are providing a lot of extra support to the students. One thing that's not on here, because it just happened a couple days ago, one of our teachers, Mr. Okalevich, is going to team up with a science teacher and do an ed camp session in January on how to really support our MLs, and he does a phenomenal job working with those students in, in the classes, and I'm excited for him to be able to share that with all the middle and high school teachers that, that wish to attend that session. One of the big things that we've done this year, kind of looked at iXL at the middle school and said, we can make some use of that as well. So I took a look at the grades, the MCAS scores, some other data points, and identified about 40-plus at-risk freshmen that are struggling in math. And the, the concern is that, you know, let's say that they're doing a unit on systems of equations. Well, if they don't really understand an equation, a linear equation, they're going to have trouble solving a system. But if they don't understand fractions, then they're not going to understand a linear equation. And so different students have these entry points that it's a big ask of them to do what we're asking them to do in the classroom. So what I decided to do is kind of use iXL to try and fill in those gaps for each individual student where they are. So we really just started this, we're about three weeks in, so kind of fine-tuning it a bit, but each cycle, students are coming down to the library and working on a handful of skills. We're in, we're just wrapping up our second cycle right now of eight days. So the first cycle, I kind of let them be selective, whatever the, the platform suggested after their diagnostic that they work on. And Jill showed you hers with a lot of green and yellow and red. The vast majority of these students, if we, if I put a grid up there, it would be red. They are significantly testing at below grade level, but we want to help them access the current curriculum. What we started this cycle is they could choose a couple, but I also assigned a couple. I talked to the freshman algebra teachers and said, what are you going to be working on next? And I took something that was slightly below that, the precursor to that content, and had students working on that over this past cycle, so when they go into their classes next week, they can hopefully access the curriculum better than they currently have been. This is a work in progress. I do not have tangible results at this point. I hope to share some with you later this year. The phenomenal thing about this is, rather than just dropping them on a computer screen and expecting them to learn, we have support present. They're meeting in a conference room down in the library. We have a support expert there, Mrs. Niles, I'm sure many of us know her well, and some of the students know her well from the middle school. They're being, they're able to ask questions and get instruction. When I drop in there, there's, there's stuff going on on the whiteboard. The students are actively engaged in their learning and really getting a personalized hand-on, hands-on experience in a differentiated approach that meets them where they need. And our hope is to really fill in these gaps and allow them to better access the current curriculum, and I hope to have some good support, good data to, to support that later this year. Want to kind of start to wrap it up with the advanced placement. Our enrollment is at extremely high levels. Close to 14% of our students are now taking AP math coursework. Back 2017 to 2022, it was about 5 to 8%. Despite this, I shouldn't say despite, but along with this, concurrently with this, we are getting extremely high scores. 97% of our students passed the exams last year, and 77% got a four or five, which went, if they're applying for STEM majors, a lot of times, a three just unfortunately is not enough, according to some colleges. So the four or five definitely will get them the college credit in the math or science courses, I should say math for us, but if they are enrolling in a STEM major. Our goal is to continue to increase the enrollment and get more students taking AP coursework, and we will do that through rigorous previous coursework and effective communication, really trying to communicate both with students and families about the opportunities that they have. AP pre-calculus, I know that was one of my big points last year. The enrollment did drop a little bit this year. I did expect that to happen. I think for last year, all but two of the students, it was the only AP course they ever took at Walpole High School, and so it was very rigorous for them. And I think they went around and gave feedback to some of their friends that, hey, this course is hard. The unfortunate piece is they did not get the results until July, when course selections and scheduling and all that stuff was already done. 24 to 25 students passed, and I, it's one of the things that I'm most proud of from last year, the students taking on that challenge, being successful. I congratulate Mrs. Waters for doing a phenomenal job teaching a course that was brand-new to everybody. So again, most of the students, it is the only AP math course that they've taken at Walpole High School. Some of them have taken other AP coursework or are currently enrolled. We're really trying to look at it as an opportunity for them to be prepared for college-level coursework and college mathematics, as well as getting AP credit. And the belief is really that it's accessible for all students. So any student that completes Algebra II can really jump into this course and have some success. So we're really targeting some growth in that course next year, and that will be one of my big goals for the, as students start to consider what they would like to do as Ultimately, I want students to look at AP as letters to embrace, rather than letters to fear. This slide is really just kind of a data dump, if you want to look at everything in one place, but I'm going to kind of switch more to the individual data points and just highlight a couple things. I know Dr. Han did provide you with a school overview, but just wanted to touch base on some of the, the math stuff. This is our enrollment. Again, it is continuing to increase overall, about the same as last year, 125, I believe, this year enrolled in AP math. Our average scores continue to increase. It's just phenomenal results. These students are working hard, we're asking a lot of them, and they are, they're answering that call. The percent scoring three or better is absolutely phenomenal. The, the light blue bar on the right is the, is the global averages, and Walpole is far exceeding them in every course. A couple of courses at 100% of the students pass, but the rest were in the 90s. So still phenomenal. The number of students scoring three or better, just, again, every year, we're increasing, and a lot of the, chunk of the past year's increase was due to the pre-calculus, but it was also growth in, in every other AP course. Overall, in conclusion, our data does demonstrate that we are continuing to grow and have high achievement. Our lessons are fostering student engagement and critical thinking, and that ideally leads, or it is leading to more mastery. And again, the increased enrollment and scores in AP coursework shows that as students progress to the high school, a huge number of them are heading success at, at the college work level. We strive to continue to promote an environment that supports student success, confidence, and perseverance. We want to really work hard and build on the PD that we've, that we've taken, and to expand our differentiated instruction strategies and, and techniques that will assist all students, and we want to use, continue to use the data to inform our instruction and supports, especially for our high-need students, and promote students to challenge themselves with rigorous coursework, and continue to explore PD opportunities that will allow us to provide our students with the, the best education possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rodolphy. Does anybody have any questions or comments?
Just a couple. Thank you. This is great information, and a lot of good successes here, so that's awesome. Previously, we've heard that it's really hard to get good PD in math, so I'm glad you found the, the company that's, that's helpful with differentiated instruction. Do you find that they're also helpful with, like, teaching multiple strategies so that, like, the, the sort of stereotypical bad math teacher just talks louder with the same words? And, you know, ideally, when you're looking for PD, you want that, like, don't forget, there's multiple ways of thinking about whatever the, the topic is. there's multiple ways of thinking about whatever the topic is. Do you feel like that company is helpful with that?
I believe so. I think it's been very enlightening for me, and a lot of the teachers have responded positively. We get treated in some of the workshops for about half an hour as a class. And we kind of, she'll kind of model it. And it's really, the lesson that we observed that she modeled was really fascinating. Because again, it was a diverse group of students, and it was really welcoming to all insights and opinions and valuing what all the students had to say. And it really wasn't just about arriving at the correct answer. It was more about exploring the different approaches to get there. And it's, you know, sometimes it's visual, sometimes it's written, sometime, you know, algebraic. There's a lot of different pathways to arrive at the correct answer. And it's really been enlightening to me, as I said, to see it in action. Because I think similar, every other educator, I can continue to grow.
Of course, of course. Okay, two other questions. You mentioned IXL, and it sounds like you're using it for a narrow group of students. Do you have, like, do you have the capacity, if you wanted to, to use it for many students? Or do we only sign up for like a package that buys you twenty kids?
We did buy X number of licenses, and we had a certain amount left over after the middle school that I decided to implement. It's something that I think we could look at expanding. I really do want to see how it works with this group. I think for certain students, it might not be the most useful tool if they're already exceeding grade level. I don't know that it's something that is a great tool for like extension.
No, I agree. But if you're saying that like the kids that are getting help right now would be completely red, that means that there are, there's other kids-
Yes, the yellow.
That are some red, but not all red.
Yes.
And then some reds and yellows. So I guess it just makes me think that math is so hard if you have gaps. I mean, math is hard to begin with for a lot of kids, but especially if you have gaps. So I would like us to think about expanding the number of kids that can use that. Because we need to get beyond just the total reds.
Yes, I agree, and I think- I would say, you know, we have about forty to forty-five. And I think, in all honesty, if I tried to tackle a hundred, I don't know. If I would have been as effective with what I'm trying to do-
Of course.
I would like to try and use this as a test group. And if it works well, then I will absolutely go to administration and ask for a few more licenses so that we can expand the program.
Yeah, I think just to be clear, Nancy, for full transparency, we made a decision not to buy it for the high school. You know, there wasn't like a financial reason we couldn't afford it or we're only using. That was the decision to not buy it for every student. Some of the folks we had asked in other districts was that IXL was not as successful for high school-level students. Then Mr. Rodolphy and Steve and I, you know, led by John, had the idea like, all right, well, what about trying to extend it for intervention, for additional support, for maybe a group of students that it would be more successful? So I think we're using this. Certainly, if we saw great results, we would not, you know, we would not hesitate to expand it, especially probably for freshmen. But, you know, full transparency, we didn't order it for the high school.
Thank you. And I forgot my other question.
And sometimes you need to distinguish between the kids that aren't interested in trying on your assessment and the kids that tried and didn't do well.
Right. Yeah, hopefully, within a couple of months, we should get some really good data out of this and be able to sort through it. And we've, I've made it clear to students that this is not a lifetime commitment, so to speak. If they begin to experience the success that we would like them to in their math class, it's kind of they can graduate from the program. And, you know, I would love to go in and shake their hands and have zero kids doing this in February. Because that means we got everyone to where they need to be. That's the goal.
Any questions? Any other questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. Thanks.
Our next item of business is a discussion or presentation on the Special Education Reserve. Is this you, Mr. Frishak?
It is. So what's coming around is a list of the process for establishing a special ed reserve account. So last Thursday, the way this began was last Thursday at a school committee workshop, a question was asked about establishing a special ed reserve account, which is an account where funds can be placed. And in the case of an overage in tuition generally or transportation, these funds can be used to stabilize or support our budget and help us finish a year when we wouldn't have adequate funding within our appropriated budget. So I was asked by the school committee to provide the information necessary to establish an account in Walpole. So what you have on this list is basically what the steps that we would go through in order to establish an account in Walpole. So number one is, what is, it's the Mas general law that accommodates or sets the stage for a special ed reserve is Chapter Forty, Section Thirteen E. What Thirteen E allows is the establishment of a special ed reserve fund. The funds can be used without further appropriation for unanticipated, unbudgeted special education costs added district tuition and transportation. And it specifies repeatedly that the fund balance is capped at two percent of the annual net school spending. For Walpole, that would be about one point two million, so we cannot exceed that as a set aside in this account. The required votes to establish a fund are a majority vote of the school committee, a majority vote of town meeting as well. That establishes the fund, does not fund it, just allows for the framework for a reserve account related to special ed. Then obviously, how would you fund the reserve? Could be an annual appropriation, could be a transfer from available funds such as free cash via a warrant article. The treasurer holds and invests the funds so that you earn interest on this fund, on the funds that are sitting there that are unused at that point. And again, the fund balance cannot exceed two percent of annual net school spending. And then using the funds, how do we go about using it? There were some questions about how we would be able to utilize the funding. So it requires a majority vote of the school committee and then a majority vote of the select board to approve it as well. It does not require meeting a town meeting. It does not require a presentation that I'm aware of at town meeting. Once approvals occur, the money can be used without further appropriation from eligible unanticipated costs. Ongoing requirements, we need to obviously monitor that cap, make sure that we don't exceed the amount that we're allowed to have in the fund, that we obviously maintain the use of the funds for, only for statutory purposes, and then interest is retained in the fund that goes towards the balance. So your accrued interest helps build additional balance that can be utilized when you have a deficit. And then finally, how do you set it up? So a step-by-step checklist was included here for the business office. You draft a school committee vote to accept Thirteen E. That'll be step one. Draft town meeting language, secure the school committee and legislative body votes. Work with the treasurer and accountant to create the funding in the accounting system, which would be munis. Appropriate or transfer the initial funding. So obviously, we need to put funds in there before we can access them, so figuring out where those funds would come from. And then increase, to create internal procedures for how to manage these funds so that they're appropriated the correct way. And then monitor the balance and compliance annually to make sure that is, again, managed correctly. So that would be the establishment of and then the management of a special ed reserve fund for Walpole.
Questions or comments?
Bill? Thank you, Mr. Jeff. Thank you. Really appreciate you, the quick turnaround. I know this has been on the Masbo listserv, and folks have been talking about this a lot. I think the genesis of this is that we've, we've discussed this in the past a number of times. Obviously, we had a very difficult special education funding year last year. Because of that, we're doing pretty well in our circuit breaker. Generally, when things are not on fire is the time to have deliberative discussions about planning for the future. We've seen in my thirteen school budgets years where special ed costs have been very difficult and challenging. So I think it's a good mechanism to have as a tool in our toolbox. I think it, this is a good time to seek to create it. I know we probably wouldn't insert funding until at least the fall, if at all, in the beginning. But I think it merits kind of merits close examination so that even though we as a body are working hard and will continue to work hard to control costs, talk about what the division of the OSD is doing with the allowable costs for special ed education year-over-year, we should also be mindful of the fact that we may have ourselves, find ourselves in a difficult spot in the future, hopefully many years in the future. And this may be another tool to help us close a future budget, maybe in twenty-eight, maybe in twenty-nine. So I think it's something worth exploring and discussing. And I appreciate you kind of laying it out very clearly for us what would be required.
Anybody else? Carrie?
I just want to make sure that I understand the votes required on all ends of this. So Mike, you're saying that to establish the fund, we vote, and then town meeting votes to establish it. So really, what we'd be talking about is sponsoring an article for a spring town meeting and putting it before the body. And does it require a simple majority vote or a two-thirds vote to establish the fund?
I believe it said in here, majority.
Majority vote? And is that the case also for allocating funds to the reserve account? Or does, do you know, does that require a two-thirds?
I don't know the answer to that.
Okay. But then, on the flip side, when we are seeking to access those funds, we do not go before a town meeting. It's just our vote and the vote of the select.
Correct.
Okay. Yeah, I agree with Bill. I think now is a fantastic time to have this conversation. As he mentioned, you know, last year, we found ourselves in a bit of a pickle around our special ed funding. And, you know, we, I think, surprised our counterparts on the town side a little bit with the scope of the problem. And to their credit, they rallied behind us, and we collaboratively came up with a solution, and that was wonderful. And I think none of us would care to be in that situation again. And I think this would guard against having such volatile swings that we have to address. It would help to have a little bit more of a cushion beyond circuit breaker, which, as we know, also varies year to year. I think also that it would comfort a lot of town meeting members, and certainly comforts me to know that there's a cap on how much money can be there so that, you know, we're not tying up significant amounts of funding in such a reserve account. But we're giving ourselves just a little bit more of a cushion to address costs that, one, are completely out of our control and, two, are mandated by the government. So we don't have a choice in addressing them. So those are my thoughts right now. I would love a question, I would love an answer to the question about whether the allocation question requires a simple majority or a two-thirds majority at town meeting. But yes, I think this is a good time to be having this conversation.
Nancy?
I also think that this is an important thing for us to explore. But I really, really don't think that now is the time to move forward on a specific article. I've thought about this a lot since Thursday night. I think, and that's why I asked to put these charts in our packet, because I think we need a really broad conversation about a couple of things. And so I've been trying to advance this conversation for over a year, as a number of you guys know. And the charts seem to indicate that our, our share of the pie has decreased significantly over the last five years. A three, over three percent increase, sorry, decrease means over three million dollars' worth of money that didn't come to the school district. And I think that the conversation is complex. I think that ideally, we may prefer to be asking for money to go to our operating budget rather than being put into a reserve because of this, of this shift that has gone in a negative direction for us. I also think that it probably is, could be, and I would say likely would be, be the end of our circuit breaker account in the end. Or it very likely could be an unintended consequence. I think like an objective budgeter would say, well, have one or the other, but not both. And we have control, we have full control over that circuit breaker account. We have more control than we would have over the sped reserve account, the way I'm reading this tonight. I think that we do want to have this discussion. I just think that we should table this request for now. Start by generating the questions that these charts imply. We look at this, and I look at this, I think, the same way that you do, Bill, when it comes to, like, we've gotten a lot more free cash over the last few years. But I couldn't identify, like, I was thinking about it, and I can't identify how much of that free cash is spoken for in the same way that our Medicaid funding is spoken for. And how much is really like, is really excess free cash that's being given to building projects, for example? Like, I would like to say, I look at that and I see extra revenue that could be coming to us. When I look at the local receipts graph, we're budgeting less than what actually comes in. And I look at that and I say, that looks like there's additional revenue that we should be talking about. And I do think we should be talking about it. I would just, I think that if we put an article forward now, that we're not doing it to try to impact the FY twenty-seven budget. And I think if we put an article forward now, it will be like, put into the process that builds up to town meeting, and we won't have as thoughtful of a discussion as we need to have. The one that I'm really concerned about is I'd really like to get to the conversation of, why did we lose three percent of the budget that we had typically had in the past? It's, so to me, it's a much bigger conversation than just we have to think about the sped reserve. We've been able to build back our circuit breaker account, even though we had to deplete it completely. And that's a good thing. That means that there's no emergency on the horizon. And I think we'll be giving ourselves more options. Like I said, I've been trying to advance this conversation for a good while. And it takes a lot of, it takes a lot of people's time if they want to consider it fairly. And I think we would be well-served by putting together some questions. I've started it already. I would love to work with you, Bill, and get a good set of questions to the town administrator by the end of next week, town administrator and the select board. I just think that if we separate it out and say, you know, we've had this discussion around the special ed reserve, the need for it, but also the bigger picture, I think we would be protecting ourselves better.
Carrie?
Can I ask for clarification, Nancy? I didn't quite understand what you were saying about our circuit breaker account as it would relate to a special ed reserve.
So we have our own circuit breaker account that we, you know, used last year. We fully control it.
Yeah.
If, I don't think- If, I don't think that it would be, I don't think it's, that there's probably any place that would have a circuit breaker account and a special ed reserve account. So I think we should have to, should at least consider, if we only get one, would we rather have the current way of operating, or would we prefer this one?
But what's, where does the idea come from that we only get, could have one?
Well, because we'd be tying up a lot of money if we had two, for one thing. And would we want to do that?
But we don't, we're not under any obligation to fund the special ed reserve account to any particular
Correct.
level, right?
Correct.
So I guess I don't, at this stage, without further information, I guess I don't see the existence of a special ed reserve account as a threat to our circuit breaker. Now, if there's more information out there that we don't have, like, that's a point to consider. But at this point, I don't see the harm in seeking to at least establish the account. And, you know, just because we work to perhaps draft an article for Spring Town Meeting, it doesn't mean that we are locked into it. We could always pull it back if we felt like we needed to. But I think, you know, and I guess the other point that I would make is I don't, I don't actually see this issue and the operating budget as being pieces of a whole that need to go in tandem with each other. I think a sped reserve would, you know, likely be initially funded through some allocation of free cash, which is exceptionally healthy right now, as we all know. And yet, free cash doesn't transfer into our operating budget because it's one-time money.
Is it one-time money?
Right. But I guess I'm struggling to see that our acting to push forward a sped reserve would, you know, would preclude further conversations about our operating budget and the percentages. So I guess I don't see, to me, that risk does not feel terribly significant in this moment without further information.
So let me just try. When I look at these two graphs, it appears to me like some of this money is recurring. But could I say that? I don't know that.
Right.
I think that, though, when, when we budget millions of dollars less than what actually comes in year over year. So if it's recurring money, I would want us to consider getting it for the school department and having us decide that maybe some of it goes into a sped reserve, but maybe the need is more in the operating budget. Because we've, our operating budget has declined in terms of, not in terms of dollars, but in terms of the percentage of the share. So, and I think that, as I said, because I've been trying to advance this conversation, that if we narrow it to we need it for a special ed reserve, that it's going to be hard to keep people in the conversation for something bigger than that. And then going back to the question about one or the other, I'm just thinking the way I've heard previous and current select boards and finance committees think. Like, I don't know that they would say, you can't have two reserve funds. But I wouldn't be surprised at all if we were told that. So I
Nancy, I could add to that. I'm sorry to interrupt you. So there's a second document here. I didn't, I chose not to give it out to you because it's kind of anecdotal, and it's a listserv that Bill mentioned earlier. I'll just pass this around. It includes some dialogue between a couple of assistant superintendents of finance that talks about the fact that, and one is Wellesley in particular, they had to forego circuit breaker carryover and assured the town that they would not carry over money in circuit breaker if they were to set up a special ed reserve. So they did agree to that. They also came up with some other funding mechanism for using Medicaid funds also. So there was a sacrifice on the school, school committee, school departments' end to make the special ed reserve work or fund it. So I think that's what Nancy's referring to. The other, the other assistant superintendent of finance in here is also commenting that they set up the fund, but they struggle to find the means to fund it itself, and where does that money come from? So I think based on the conversation you guys were just having, I think this is more meaningful. That's why I give it out to you guys. It's not as simple as set it up and fund it, because there's some towns struggle with it. And I thought Wellesley was an interesting one, because they have a lot of resources, and you think that they may not struggle with that. But clearly, that's not the case.
Can I ask a clarifying question about circuit breaker? That just, for myself and anybody who's still listening to this conversation, is there a limit to how much we put into the circuit breaker fund?
Yeah. So, you mean as far as carryover goes?
Yes.
It's closer to your actual circuit breaker reimbursement
Okay.
for a fiscal year?
Yep.
So that's about $3,006,000 this year. And we're at about $1,00175,000.
And then the money comes from reimbursement?
Correct.
Right? Whereas this special ed fund, money could come from anywhere. We wouldn't be relying on reimbursement. Right? I'm trying to figure out, like, like you said, Nancy, that sometimes, and you just shared, Mike, that sometimes there's a choice between the two. But for me, if there's a different mechanism and a different limit for them, I don't see why you couldn't have both. You know what I mean? Like, it's, if one is reimbursement and you're saving that reimbursement and there's less of a limit, I don't know. Just trying to figure out, like, if the funding source is so different, why?
I think it's redundancy.
Okay.
I think that they would look at it. That's, that's what I think you'd read, is go back and thread throughout that.
Sure.
Mike, if I may?
Go ahead, Billy.
Thank you. To that, I want to, you know, go back and sort of say four things. I think, one, to your point, we would have to create it now, in the spring, in order to, like, let's say, I hope this conversation is very successful. I do recall around this time last year, having a conversation on the same lines and hearing, you know, there are so many emergent, different funding structures, we don't think we're going to have a lot of free cash. And now we have a lot of free cash. So let's say we are not successful, as successful as we would like to be in encouraging our colleagues in government to take a more robust and progressive view of revenue. And then we find ourselves again with a ton of money in the middle of the year, which cannot be appropriated to the school budget. In that instance, which I hope does not happen, I want a piece of that pie for just in case. Because if we go back to my second point, when we had this six-figure, middle-of-the-year special ed costs, we had to go to them and say, hey, can you give us a piece of, can you give us a larger piece of our budget? And we didn't get that money until the fall. So if you had that sort of additional, they use circuit breaker for a reason, for the analogy's sake. But if you had that additional release valve, in the event that something like that happened, in the event that we had a large amount of funding, that could be an opportunity for us to point to that. And to the person who says we shouldn't have two of these, well, obviously, the circuit breaker statute, it's a revolving fund. But I think we're a town that pours a ton of money into OPEB, which is an additional sort of safety net that's not particularly usable for healthcare costs outside of our normal appropriations for, you know, for all others. So it's, I think it's a defensible position to say, yeah, we should have a nest egg. Why? Because special ed amongst all the matters that come before us is the one that generally trips the most in, outside of transportation. Like, we're often grappling with special ed, so that, it's often at the forefront. So it should be treated slightly differently. So I think, you know, that's point number three. And as far as the, I like to kind of echo Carrie, I don't see the conversations taking away from one another. I see, there's no funding, and I don't think we're asking for any funding in the, so that would be a clarifying question I have. If we create this, we can put 10 bucks in it from free cash or what have you. There's no minimum
No.
to keep it running, obviously. Obviously, from a do-to-do, from accounting perspective, it's an additional line that you have to look at if there was nothing in there. But I just think, you create this, you put it on a shelf, you have it be a tool. And I don't particularly see it, you know, hampering our wider discussion around revenue, which I anticipate to be really robust, and I think hopefully animated on the other side of the table as well, that we can kind of get beyond some of the stumbling blocks we've always had, say, hey, we got fixed pension costs, fixed healthcare costs. That's the crummy thing about DLS is the slowness with which this data is aggregated. Like, 26, we obviously saw huge healthcare costs, that we as the school department, because of our employees, we have a large, we have a large part of that. On the other hand, because most of our employees are in MTRS, you know, when we get, when we have difficult numbers come back from, you know, county retirement, MTRS does a little better. So we're helping the bottom line there. So Nancy's quite correct, there's a lot of, you know, deep discussions happening. But I don't see, I see it as a release valve that we might find ourselves in August when this stuff comes in. And as we've said before, there's a generally fraught discussion in a couple of weeks, once free cash is finalized. Where that goes, I think it, it's all, you can't advocate for it then when, if you don't, if it's not physically there. So, you know, I appreciate that. I'd love to keep talking about this, because I think, you know, we're raising a lot, and it's a good baseline to kind of show how serious we are about having a really freewheeling and honest conversation about revenue in general this fiscal year. But I think it's worthwhile. However, I guess, if you wanted to table it, I would say we still need to be aggressive. Like, tell me what, in August, when there's more free cash than we thought, like, how do, what other mechanisms are there for us to say, kind of to Nancy's point about piece of the pie? Like, what other thing can we use to get a larger piece of that after capital budget's been baked, after the like? It's like, really, the, when you have those windfalls, it's easy to shovel them into stabilization accounts. And right now, we don't have one on the shelf. So that's my thought. I'd love to hear what Nancy has to say.
Okay. Two things. One is, and I did this too, I called it, we have a circuit breaker account. We have a circuit breaker carryover account,
Right.
which is different. Because it's not just funded with the reimbursement.
Right.
It's funded with reimbursements from the state, it's funded from any excess that we choose to put in there. So it's not, and it gives us the flexibility to carry over money that has been very helpful to us, like, very helpful in other situations. I think that, and, you know, your point about when free cash comes in, it comes in in August every year. We, if we were, if we needed it, we could ask to have money put in our circuit breaker account. Like, if we had to deplete it, for example.
Yeah.
That's the account that's there today. So I don't think we're at risk for not having a place to ask for it. We just haven't done it in the past.
That's what I was trying to figure out.
They, but that, that account is there. And if, you know, if we were having a crisis in August, we could say, you know, we need $700,000 put in there and make the case in the same way that we would make it for the special ed account. So I do think that possibility exists. But I think the important part to think about is we carry over money in that account for a variety of things. I mean, that's the reality. It's a If I had to pick one, I would, I would stake my career on we want the circuit breaker account more than we want this. And I think that's an important consideration.
Yeah.
Mike? Well, Carrie, keep it
I agree. Is have our aggressive and wide-ranging budget discussion with our colleagues in the, in the, in the spring. But think about, you know, in understanding of that, and examining how that conversation progresses and the fruits of it, when we look at our capital requests, we could possibly do this again, in which case we could seek to, you know, not do it tonight, but seek to put it on in the fall, along with our capital requests, and meet again in, over the summer, if, let's say, hopefully, we're not successful, and hopefully, there is a bunch of extra free cash, and make the case, okay, in the, in the spring, we were going to just ask to create it. If there's a whole bunch of extra money, in the fall, we want to revisit, we want to create it, we want to put some funding through. So I guess I would be open to postponing it for a season as we see, you know, what happens with, with our revenue discussions. And obviously, you know, there's the same big icebergs, pension, healthcare, GLP-1s, GLP-1 riders, through MIA, you know, they're all going to be part of that discussion, as well as on our end, you know, things like addressing the achievement gap from our side of the table. So I guess I could, I can wait a season, see what Carrie and Kristen think. Oh, yeah?
Yeah.
So what are we doing exactly?
Yeah.
It sounds like
I haven't heard anything that's moved towards a motion or moved towards tabling or
A consensus to table, maybe?
Table till
I wouldn't, when you said, just for the fall, that's all I would think, I mean, I think we need to advance this conversation.
All right. I'll table till the meeting we take up, capital requests for the fall.
Is that a motion?
Yeah. I'll make a motion to that.
All right. We have a motion to table? Do we have a second? Second? Second from Nancy. Let me, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Hands aye. Against? We have all. Next item, hopefully a shorter item.
Lots of questions on the calendar, too.
First reading of the school calendar.
Yeah, just take, this is just the first reading, so take a look at it. If you have any comments, the calendar, teachers would return on Monday, August 31st. You can see some of the labor this year, the way labor day falls. And then students will return to school on Wednesday, September 2nd. And then maybe pre-K and K will return to school on Tuesday, September 8th. Last day of school without snow days would be Monday, June 21st. I believe Juneteenth and thereon in June.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It was
Yeah. So it'd be, if you see, the last day would be the 21st. So this is just, this is a first reading. We try to get it on here, so then in January, it can be voted on, so then families will know to make their, they'll usually start calling in January. They usually will start calling you around January. Yeah, they already
Yeah.
So let's just highlight for them and say, one more time loudly, that because Labor Day falls so late,
Yes.
we are getting out a good week plus later than we have the past couple of years.
This is the worst-case scenario for that.
Yeah.
Yeah?
Right. And that's without, that's even without snow days.
Right.
So I just want to say it loud for the people in the back, because it's going to be something to notice.
Any other questions or comments about the calendar?
First reading.
No vote.
First reading, no vote. Very good. Our next item is a first reading of the school committee meeting calendar.
Yes. So the one thing I think Jen and I worked on, we looked at this, that we changed, if you notice, typically, it looks at September 10th meeting, looks late, but that's because of the Labor Day. I mean, you know, we can, we can move it if you want to. But what we did is, I think somebody will say like March, we only meet once. So, we kind of moved it down so that March has two meetings that month. So, it's the same number of meetings. It's just that, and trying to keep it on the second and fourth Thursday of each month. So, yeah, please take a look. And if you see something, Carrie, that's like some feedback, and then we can, we can make note of that for the, for the second reading.
I'm just curious if the November 12th meeting will again conflict with MAS, MASC.
Yes, we thought of that. So, we're waiting to see and trying to call to find out. We think that it may not conflict because November 11th is Veterans Day. So, we're just, usually it's like a Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. So, I don't know if they'll have it during...
Maybe they'll push it a week?
Yeah. I'm wondering if they'll push it like the first week in November. It used to, a long time ago, it would be the first week in November.
It used to be the first week.
Okay. So, we're going to like hope, hope. And I think, to your point, Carrie, maybe if they, if they haven't come out with the date, we could always know that maybe we can, we can flex that and move it.
Yeah.
Like we did this year.
Sounds good.
And we usually have a meeting in August.
Yes.
Did you think about that?
Yes. We usually have the meeting in August because that's usually, I remember from the first week of school. It's usually the first Thursday of school.
So, you're trading that for two weeks of September.
Right. We can always move it to the first Thursday because I know that we usually keep it the second or fourth. But, you know, think about that. I mean, I'm fine. Doesn't matter one way or the other. We would just, we would have it on the third and then, and then either move that one to the 17th or just keep two weeks and then have it on the 24th.
I was just noticing.
Yeah. And it doesn't matter, doesn't matter to me either. But, you know, I thought of it too. Usually it's, I don't know, it's half a dozen, like, like having it the first week, that first day the kids are in, we can have a, you know, discussion. And then the principals usually come the second time to do the opening of school. I don't know if it's too late to, you know, the opening of school on September 24th. So, we could leave it September 3rd, have that meeting, you know, with the, with the first couple of days of school, have, you know, and then the third week, have the principals do their report, their opening of school report, which would be a true opening of schools report.
That might be better around open houses, too.
Yes.
When you think about it.
All right. So, why don't we look at that? Yeah. Maybe we can see, we can book, book that room. Me, I don't like it.
Next is the superintendent report.
Yes, it's me. So, it's the first time I'm going to say, I hope everybody had a nice Thanksgiving. And now we've got like, what, two weeks? I think that's the last time we had a meeting. Few things, what was nice is the Saturday morning after Thanksgiving, I had the privilege of attending the Wapo High School baseball banquet.
Oh, nice.
With St. Champs at the Wapo Country Club. And Coach Costello, he did, he did a great job. And he was presented with his ring by Coach Burlick Tompkins, who was the former baseball coach that we love and everybody loves and respects. And Coach Tompkins is also, I believe, the Friends of St. Patrick Person of the Year. So, it was really, it really was a nice, a nice banquet. Last Thursday, I attended the MECO conference along with some of our other staff members. Some great motivational speakers throughout the day. We also heard from our DESI commissioner and also our new MECO director, Dr. Summers. And Dr. Summers is going to be, Summer is going to be visiting our schools next Tuesday to meet with our staff and our students. And so, we really look forward to her, her visit. The Fails, Leach, Rogers, and Kunde Scholarship was held this week and we awarded $129,750 worth of scholarships. So, those who received a scholarship will receive a letter from me. I'm going to promise Jen, I'm going to get them signed tomorrow morning. And if I saw them like on the table, I was like, all right, I'll get to it.
The side dollars wasn't a bribe. That was actually a change.
Oh, okay. All right. Thanks. So, top of it. I just want to thank the school committee and principal ambush for participating in the process. And I want to extend our gratitude to the Fails, Leach, Rogers, and Kunde families for their generous endowed funds because that's what makes it possible to offer these scholarship opportunities to, to our students. Yesterday, I held our third superintendent's Wapo High School student cabinet meeting of the year, and we focused on some projects and discussions that the group believes that will have an impact on the student body. We also had several visitors attend. So, they provided students with some opportunities to speak about their focus areas, you know, poke some holes, ask some questions. And it also gave the opportunity for our guests to get some feedback to the students. So, I know Dr. Hahn, you know, through academics, you know, when I was going around, you know, he was asking them their opinion about certain courses that they might like to see. So, I just want to thank the following people for attending. Naomi Austin, principal ambush, Dave St. Martin, Maria Hall, our food service director, Dr. Hahn, and then assistant principals at the middle school, Mr. Cashman and Mr. Larry. So, it really was a great event. And the students loved it. We've begun our budget process for the 26, 27 school year. So, Mr. Frischa and I are meeting with all members of the leadership council to discuss their budgets. We're finishing that up at the end of next week. And then we have a budget hearing scheduled for January 20th. Believe it or not, kindergarten preregistration begins on January 5th for the 26, 27 school year. We're going to send that information out, principal e-notes, my notes, school committee mailers, website, you name it, we're going to get it out there. So, we'll, we'll let families know how they can do it. If they can't get to the elementary school, they can mail it in, they can come by the superintendent's office, and we'll give those hours of when they can, they can come by and drop that off. Also, to just bring attention to phishing scam, I call it like, don't take the, don't take the bait because some schools in our areas are seeing an uptick in phishing scams targeting schools and parents. And these scams will pretend to be from a principal or from like me, from one of our central office administrators, advertising a special offer. Just to let you know, I will never advertise a special offer. So, all communication will go through, you know, different channels. It'll have, you know, our traditional office emails. It could go through Talking Points, the smartphone app, Thrill Share. So, if they, if your, people aren't aware, they can, they can give us a call. We can help them. Our peer leaders, our Wapo High School peer leaders participated in National Adoption Day at the Dedham Juvenile Courthouse, and they played such an important role in the event, and they received a nice thank you letter from Judge Mara Hardiman. And she expressed her appreciation for the hard work and the positive impact they made. And they were really instrumental in helping the event run smoothly, created this warm and supportive atmosphere for the family. So, it was, it was really cool. And just a reminder, check your calendars. We've got concert after concert after concert. And also, the middle school winter drama performance is next Thursday and Friday. It's called the Enchanted Bookshop. Tomorrow's an early release day, and then winter break runs from the 23rd through the 4th, and the 23rd is an early release day. So, that's what I have. I just wanted to do one quick thing because I know our high school person couldn't be here. Wapo, MECO, and Friends are having a roller skating event tomorrow, right, after the half-day. And so, that is on the docket tomorrow. And Honor Society is requesting lightly worn coats and jackets for coats for kids. And I'll put the rest of it in there for everybody.
Any questions or comments? Our next order of business is the Wapo High School competency determination policy.
So, this is on old business because this is, we are seeking your vote of approval tonight to make changes to our competency determination policy. As you might remember, last year, the state required us to submit a new competency determination policy based on the vote of MCAS. And that required students to satisfy through completion of coursework in, which we identified as ELA, math, and a science course, which were aligned with the MCAS assessment. This year, they've ultimately made one significant change in that that also requires us, for our students, to demonstrate mastery of an associated grade level standard. So, you will see on page one of the, in your packet, demonstrating mastery is defined by satisfactory completion of coursework and mastery demonstrated by a passing average six year above on summative assessments. If a student does not demonstrate mastery of coursework through the summative assessment average, that student will be given an opportunity to demonstrate mastery through a portfolio project approved by the classroom teacher and department chair. In addition, on the later pages, there is some further information about additional considerations. Some of those were included in your CD last year and some updates around appeals process, which was also asked to be updated and edited for this new competency determination. So, tonight, we're seeking your approval so that we can submit that to the, to DESI by our deadline of December 31st.
Questions or comments?
I'd make a motion to approve the competency determina, determination policy as presented in our packet.
All right. We have a motion from Mrs. Gallivan. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Ms. Donizio. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, it is a vote. Our next order of business is the Wapo High School project update.
Yeah, just a couple of things. The building shutdown was successful, and that was completed last week. So, the addition received permanent power on Monday. But just to let you know, the project team's projecting substantial completion for January 2nd rather than the estimated December 23rd. So, what they're doing is they, they're still making progress with the gym, they're going to sand the floor, polyurethane. So, since they're going to be doing that, we were, we were looking, there's a PBC meeting on Tuesday, we're looking at doing a possible walkthrough that's been tabled right now, postponed, just because they're going to be doing all of that work. And the bleacher installation is supposed to begin next week, and they're still continuing with that site work in the northwest corner. And they're hoping the, the excess soil that's being stockpiled, getting it out of there during the holiday break.
Questions? Our next order...
Sliding house.
Yes.
Next order of business.
All that rubble.
Any subcommittee activity? None? Next order is citizens' comments. No citizens, and now we have warrants. Would somebody like to take the warrants?
Sure. I'll make a motion to accept the following payroll warrants, number 2620 PS and number 2622 PS for the amounts listed in your packets.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Opposed, abstained, it is a vote.
I'll make a motion to approve the following accounts payable warrants for schools' food services and special ed and student activity funds under 226021, for schools' food services, special ed, and student activity funds under 226022, and for schools' food services and middle school project under 226023 for the amounts listed in your packets.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Opposed, abstained, it is a vote. And next, we have budget transfers.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the budget transfers that are listed in our packet for a total of $607,577, most of which came to us through Fall Town meeting.
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Opposed, abstained, it is a vote. And donations.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the following donation to the Boynton School from the PAC for playground equipment for $15,624.61.
We have a second?
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Opposed, abstained, it is a vote. And minutes?
Do you want to make a motion to approve the November 20, 2025 school committee meeting minutes, the November 20, 2025 curriculum subcommittee meeting minutes, the end of December 4th, 2025 school committee slash leadership council workshop meeting minutes?
We have a motion, a motion and a second. All in favor? Opposed, abstained, it is a vote. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All right. We have a motion from Mr. Buckley.
No, it's weird.
Second from Ms. Donizio. All in favor? Opposed, abstained, it is a vote. Thank you.